Good evening, and thank you all for attending today's regular Board meeting of the Board of Trustees being held today, January 16th. The time is 6:05. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance being read by Dominic Beard, a second grader at James Brothers School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Dominic.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to Superintendent's comments.
Yes, President Guerra, members of the Board. I would like to welcome three individuals to their new role here in Team SISD. They're not new to the district, but new to the role. Starting off with Ms. Angelica Herrera, who is the new Director of HR, Staffing and Recruiting. Please stand and be recognized. Also, would like to welcome Ms. Maria Rosario Flores, new Principal of Rojas Elementary. I'd also like to welcome Ms. April Granados, new Assistant Principal of Pebble Hills High School. And you, I know all three will do a wonderful, wonderful job in their new role. Also, on January 27th, Mother Daughter Conference on Saturday at Eastlake High School, January 27th. Again, the Mother Daughter Conference is at Eastlake High School. Look forward to that event. That concludes my comments. President Guerra?
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. Next, we'll move on to Board Honors. Mr. Escobar.
Good evening, President Guerra, members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. Espinoza. My name is Daniel Escobar, Chief Communications Officer for the District, and it is my pleasure to introduce tonight's recognitions. If you'll please step down to receive our honorees. Tonight, we will recognize two varsity football teams who had outstanding seasons this year. The teams will be announced by school, and so that names are heard, we ask that members of the audience, please hold your applause until everyone on each team has been introduced. First, we will recognize the Eastlake High School Football Team for winning a by-district championship. The Falcons showed incredible athletic talent and sportsmanship during the season. They finished strong with an overall record of nine and three and a district record of seven wins, only one loss. Congratulations to these amazing athletes and their coaches. The Championship Falcons are Devon Pinero, Adrian Talavera, Julius Álvarez, Chris Delgado, Keith Rodriguez, Dane Curtley, Jake Armijo, Adrian Donacio, Anthony Donacio, Diolo Haywood, Johnny Baragán, Gilbert Lira, Robert Antuna, Marco Martínez, Mike Rios, Matt Vargas, Rolando Beltrán, Rafael Beltrán, Corbin Wells, Manny Quintana, Nick De La Canal, Alejandro Villalobos, Matt Para, Jacob Gómez, Ruben Robles, Kevin Bumpus, Angel Soto, Edward Martínez, Eddie Andrade, Luis Chávez, Nate Regalado, Xavier García, Enrique Gómez, Sebastian Villarreal, Aaron Granados, Jacob Flores, James Gallardo, Jaren Coleman, Jeremy Carrillo, Xavier Pacheco, Gerardo Mendoza. Their coaches are Kenta Matsuda, Paul Herrera, Maurice Hamilton, Roger Enriquez, Juan Ortiz, Adrian Herrera, Ruben Rodríguez, and they are led by head coach JJ Calderón. If we can have you all, please return to the front for a photo. Just a quick note that all of the photos taken by our district photographer, Mr. Largo, will be posted on the district website. There's a photo icon on the bottom right-hand corner of the webpage where these photos will be available for free high-resolution download. So if we can get everybody, please hold up your certificates, face forward, and just keep smiling, look right at Mr. Largo. Congratulations once again. Next, we will recognize the El Duaro High School Football Team for winning their third consecutive district championship. The Aztecs finished the season with an overall record of seven and four and a district record of five wins, only one loss. Athletes on the team received various honors, including first and second-team 16A All-District Players, Senior All-Stars, District 16A Defensive Athlete of the Year, two-time District 16A MVP, and a two-time Associated Press All-State Team Member. Congratulations to these outstanding athletes. Again, we'll ask members of the audience to please hold your applause until all the names of the team have been read. The Championship Aztecs are Donovan Ramírez, Dare Olawé, Tyler Jones, Cedarius Barfield, Chris Bustius, Cameron Hill, Josh Ramírez, Alejandro Millian, Freddy de la Torre, Brian Goodwin, Alex Ratana, Sebastian Alonso, Sal Avila, Christian González, John Gibson, Seth Davis, Tony Rico, Willie Crossland, Willie Canales, Derek Gómez, Derek Azad, Ernie Inojosa, Brian Aitaida, Alex Marquez, Teo Tafua, Ruben Melendez, Eric de la Cruz, Abraham Solis, Cedric Haynes. Their coaches are Eddie López, Adrian Telas, Tony Isa, Justin López, Will Montano, Manolo Taylor, Mike Harris, Victor Rodríguez, Daniel Sines, Phil Barrios, and they are led by head coach Ruben Torres. If we can have you all, please return to the front for a photo. Keep smiling, looking forward. One more, one more, one more. Congratulations once again. Trustees, Dr. Espinoza, you may be seated for our final presentation. Our last recognition is a special tribute for our incredible Board of Trustees in honor of School Board Recognition Month. These hard-working public servants work diligently and transparently to govern our district and ensure every student receives endless opportunities to soar to success. Their commitment to our students and families are second to none, earning them widespread recognition across the region and the state. The SISD Board of Trustees has been selected twice as the Region 19 Board of the Year. They also earned the prestigious title of Texas Honor Board, one of the highest achievements a Texas school board can earn, and were recognized twice in the HEB Excellence in Education Award Program. The superior leadership of our Board of Trustees is vital to our district. To recognize their efforts, Team SISD students and employees are demonstrating their appreciation all month long. From special posts on Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram, to thank you messages on school marquees, SISD students and teachers unite to show the world just how much they appreciate our Board of Trustees. And on behalf of our 46,500-plus students and some 6,000 employees, we have a special video to thank you for providing, for your leadership in providing all students with endless opportunities so they can soar to success.
Because of your hard work and dedication to my success, I'm learning all about robotics and how they work. Hi, my name is Hugo Sines, and this is one of the endless opportunities in SISD.
I'm in the Win Academy, and I'm learning how to work hard, have an "I can do" attitude, and I'm never giving up on my future.
My name is Paula Garcia, and this is one of the many endless opportunities in SISD.
Technology is the key to a successful future. I'm becoming a critical thinker and learning all I can to help me get to my dream of becoming a mechanical engineer.
My name is Isai Aguilard, and this is one of the many endless opportunities at SISD.
I love animals, and what better way to help them than to learn how to care for them? At Pebble Hills, I have the opportunity to kick-start my career in veterinary sciences.
Hi, I'm Scarlett Flores, and this is one of the endless opportunities in SISD.
Training and hard work is what it takes to compete at this level. High jumping is my passion, and being in track and field here at Eastlake is helping me achieve my goal of competing in a Division I school.
Hi, my name is Maler Rios, and this is one of many endless opportunities in SISD. I love playing bass. It's who I am. Here at Monwood, my teachers have taught me that long hours of practice pay off, and now I can say I'm a top jazz player in the state of Texas for four years in a row.
My name is Guillermo Lopez, and this is one of the many endless opportunities in SISD.
Getting my associates before I even graduate from high school for free is what I love about being a student at Mission Early College. Now, I'm even attending classes at UTEP while attending high school at Mission Early College.
My name is Victoria Narrete, and this is one of the many endless opportunities in SISD.
Thank you for giving me endless opportunities for my future.
Once again, thank you, SISD Board of Trustees, for your leadership in helping us achieve success as a team. In acknowledgement of January 2018 as School Board Recognition Month, you have received your own Team SISD passport, which documents the positive impact and influence you have on our students. We also collected many souvenirs for you from students across the district. On the table to your left and the audience's right, you will find student artwork, memorable campus items, and a basket filled with school spirit objects as a small token of all of our appreciation for your service. In addition, on behalf of the students and staff in Socorro ISD, we had custom-designed Team SISD jackets made for each of you. And to personally thank each of you for your service and support of our outstanding school district, Team SISD students wrote heartfelt messages expressing their gratitude. One message from the Mission Early College High School Student Council says, "Just as kites need a gust of wind to take off, SISD and its students need the trustees' leadership to continue to grow and soar to greater heights." We have students from SISD schools here today to personally thank you for your service and present to you with one other token of our appreciation. I will introduce each student who is here to read their excerpt. Board Trustees and Dr. Espinoza, please step down as I call your name. Presenting to Board President Paul Guerra is Bruce Miles from Ernesto Serna.
Dear Mr. Guerra, thank you for building new schools that help students to learn and for making good decisions that make us better at learning.
Bruce is a kinder student at Ernesto Serna School. Presenting to Board Vice President Cynthia Nakada is Melody Brito from Dr. Sushuk.
Dear Miss Nakada, thank you for being a part of the SISD Board of Trustees. Thank you for all the decisions you've made that help our schools. Because of you, our schools are successful. You hope each one of us soar to success. At Dr. Sushuk Elementary, we are excellent every day because of you and your hard work. You inspire us to work hard and never give up. Because of you, school is the best. You are smart and brave because of all the hard decisions you've made. Seniorly, Melody Brito.
And Melody is in the third grade at Sushuk Elementary. Presenting to Board Secretary Michael Nakada is Annelle Mendez from Americas High School.
Dear Michael Ayanahera, I would like to thank you and express my gratitude for all of the wonderful things you have done to improve our school district and overall community. My dad is an administrator, and he tells me that he loves the environment that you have made for both the educators and students. Our schools are always supported financially because you do not waste the taxpayers' money. You have approved six SISD budgets and won $297 million budget, proving to everyone that you can put our trust in you when it comes to our district's funding and students' academic careers. I appreciate all the time and effort that you have committed to developing our lives and our minds. My siblings and I are receiving the best education possible, and we are able to learn and play the instruments of our liking. We knew people and developed music careers because of your responsible handling of money. You have been an excellent member of the Socorro Independent School District's Board over the past several years, and nothing would be the same without your service. You face professional challenges head-on, and you have helped all of us to come stronger in the end. Financial problems may arise for this community, but you have shown that you can tackle these issues easily, as we saw in the passage of the recent bond. Your initials spell "man," so that's pretty cool. Your daughters are the nicest and funniest people I have ever met. They have a similar sense of humor and sarcasm as you, and they respect your work with the school district as well. Whether it be with your family or your position, you take the person you are talking to seriously, and you listen to both sides of any argument with an open mind. You have improved all of our lives, both in school and at a community. I look forward to seeing what you will accomplish in the future. With your continued leadership, we will all be able to soar to success.
Ariel is in the ninth grade. Presenting to Board Trustee Hector Gonzalez is Alex Favela from Monwood High School.
Dear Mr. Gonzalez, I want to thank you for your commitment to being trustee for the Socorro Independent School District. I understand that it takes a lot of responsibility and time. However, even with all your years served, your degree, and your nonprofit/community service work, I believe that the schools in our district have been more than capable of achieving success due to your contributions and dedication. Anything you do for us at Monwood High School and throughout the district does not go unnoticed. I, along with the rest of the students at Monwood High School and the district, would like to thank you not only for all that you do in our prestigious but for taking the time to ensure the students are provided with everything they need to be successful and for your service in military. Thank you.
Alex is a junior at Monwood. Presenting to trustee Tony Ayub is Desiree Beard from Butler Elementary.
Dear Mr. Ayub, I wanted to take this time and opportunity to thank you for serving the Socorro Independent School District for over eight years. You have really helped all the scholars soar to success with all your knowledge and advice. We have all taken your advice on how to take every opportunity and chance that we receive. I think I could say that you've really helped put together this district. I know that you participate in many after-school events, and that doesn't go unnoticed. Thank you. Lastly, thank you for making decisions that always are difficult ones, and you manage to still put us scholars first. Thank you.
Desiree is in the fifth grade. Presenting to trustee Angelica Rodríguez, Itzel Guerrero from Paso del Norte.
Dear Angelica Rodríguez, thank you for taking care of our school and having only education on your mind. Thank you for volunteering to help, thank you for volunteering your time to help the community. You help us begin education from head start and help us end it in the education. Thank you for making sure we have only the best technology and for listening to our suggestions on what to change in our schools. Thank you for making our teacher's salary competitive enough to make sure we get only the best teachers. You inspire me, because even though you don't get paid, you're helping thousands of students accomplish their goals and soar. You take care of big responsibilities that no one else can handle. You are a huge part of this community, and I don't know what we would do without your help. We all love you and your cooperation. Thank you.
Itzel is in the seventh grade. Presenting to Trustee Gary Gandara, Sophia Richardson from Campesle Elementary.
Dear Mr. Gandara, thank you for helping me soar to success. You have helped Campesle by giving us computers where I use Martyn to play and learn. I thank you for the playground where I get to play with my friends. We also thank you for the shade in the playground. Sincerely, Sophia Richardson, Campesle Cobras.
And Sophia is a 1st grader at Campesle. Rounding out our team of eight and presenting to Superintendent Dr. Espinoza is Gabriel Avila from Mission Early College High School.
Dr. Jose Espinoza, on behalf of Mission Early College High School, I would like to express my deepest gratitude for your service and endless commitment you have dedicated to SISD. Without the contributions from the Board of Trustees and your leadership skills, SISD would not be recognized as a district that not only empowers students, but motivates them to accomplish their aspirations. As students, we are fortunate enough to have aspiring leaders like yourself who encourage young students to excel in our academics and strive to become leaders within our school. Oftentimes, we overlook the monumental impact leaders have on promising students. As John C. Maxwell once proclaimed, "Leaders become great not because of their power, but because of their ability to empower others." Dr. Espinoza, you have fostered this idea and exemplified it through your actions at SISD. Being a part of this outstanding district has offered me countless opportunities such as being able to graduate with my associate's degree before receiving my high school diploma. Undeniably, your unwavering support has propelled the district to exceed the expectations and attain new heights. Your leadership ensures the importance of maintaining an excellent standard, not only in the state of Texas, but the nation as well. This year, I've had the honor of being a member of the Superintendent Student Advisory Council and have senior leadership in action. By bringing students together from across the district and asking for our input, we were able to interact and network with a diverse group of students, essentially preparing us for the world ahead. As I worked alongside these students, not only have you advocated the importance of leadership, but have encouraged me to be leader at my school. Your inspiration has led to many great successes the district shares with its members. Being recognized as Region 19 Board of the Year, Texas Honor Board, and awarded the Best in Education does not occur by mere accident. It truly depicts the exceptional leadership and collaboration between others in order to accomplish a common goal, which is to improve and inspire students to their full potential. Leaders strive to turn their visions into reality, and undoubtedly, Dr. Espinoza, you have implemented your visions in SISD in hopes of a more prosperous future. Over the past five years, you have truly demonstrated the qualities of being a role model and act as an inspiration to others. I would like to take a moment and say thank you for all the many successes that SISD has achieved and the ones yet to come. The endless opportunities and bodies and standards SISD students stood upon and diligent leaders like you mimic. Once again, I would like to commend you on being an amazing leader to our district.
If I can have all the trustees, please return to the front. We're going to take a group photo of all the students and your framed letters and artwork, please. Thank you all so much again to our students and our amazing Board of Trustees for all that you do. This concludes our recognitions and presentations for this evening.
As you can see, Team SISD is the right choice for endless opportunities, correct? We love to showcase our students. Thank you all very much.
President, if I may, I may say a couple of words. Number one, I'm sure some people have heard me say that an organization, a school, a school district in this case, will only go as far as the leadership takes it. And in Socorro ISD, we are a destination school district. To give you one example, we have about 700 more students this year than what we had last year. Our bond, as one of the students read, you know, back in November 7th, passed by 60%. 60%, which speaks volumes about the confidence that the public has in SISD. And again, it starts at the top. You hear and you see horror stories about districts in the area, districts in the state, districts across the country about what turmoil that they are in, and that doesn't happen here in Socorro ISD and it's because of these seven amazing volunteers, as a student said. They are volunteers. They don't get paid. Some people out there think, "Oh, they get paid." No, this is on a volunteer basis because of their leadership. They're a phone call away. They ask questions, myself, leadership, the cabinet, they give suggestions. Their heart is truly, truly embedded in SISD. They want the best for our school district. So it is the month of January, which is School Board Recognition Month, and again, just want to thank every one of the seven members up here. We are where we are today because of their awesome leadership. So thank you all so much. Thank you.
Next item will move up to Board Trustee Business, number six, Consider Approval of National School Counselors Week Proclamation.
President Guerra, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board, before we begin our proclamation, we just want to say on behalf of the counselors, thank you for everything you do and have a great month this month and every month. This evening, we are here because the American School Counselor Association each year recognizes school counselors during National School Counselor Week, which is February 5th through 9th, 2018, and tonight, we have some of our students that will be reading the proclamation. We have, from Campesle Elementary, we have Isabella Batista, who's a 5th grader. From Escondrillas, we have a kindergartner, Avery Lee Luquide. From Clark, we have an 8th grader, Gabriela Mendoza. A 4th grader from Horizon Heights, Isaiah Chavez. And a 12th grader from Socorro High School, Brittany Duran.
Proclamation. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and...
Whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strength, interest, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness development and...
Whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further educational, personal, and social growth of their children and...
Whereas counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and realistic goals for themselves and...
Whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society. And whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim February 5th through the 9th, 2018, as National School Counseling Week.
President Guerra, we ask that the board accept the proclamation as read.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Gandara, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any for a discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, open forum. We greatly appreciate those individuals who have requested to speak to the board during open forum or in regard to a specific agenda item. We are bound by certain time constraints in order to cover all the items on the agenda and therefore must limit presentations to five minutes. Please respect the rights of others in your presentation. By law, the board cannot take action upon or discuss any item which is not posted on tonight's agenda, but we will give all presentations our serious considerations. Thank you. We will proceed to open forum.
Good evening, Board President Guerra, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. I just wanted to take a few minutes to obviously thank you for all of your service, but also to share with you some of the things that Library Services has been doing to support endless opportunities under your leadership. And one of those is to help kind of expand outside of the walls of the library. And so I wanted to share with you and with our community that we are now expanding to a consortium with other districts in the El Paso area to expand on eBooks so that kids have access to reading material at home. In addition to that, we've opened 11 little free libraries across the district so that kids can have access to print material even when our school buildings are closed. But one of the primary reasons that I'm here is because our partnerships through the library has created an opportunity for us to do summer reading activities. And with our partnership with Scholastic, we've had some phenomenal success. So she is going to be following me next as part of open forum to kind of share our successes and how it's benefited Scholastic. And so I thank you for your time and I'll let you then yield to Lisa Hernandez.
Ms. Lisa Hernandez is our next speaker.
Yes. So, good evening, Board President Guerra, Superintendent Dr. Espinoza, and the members of the board. Again, I'm Lisa Hernandez. I'm the local representative for Scholastic Book Fairs, and I especially want to take the time just to thank Marcy Sparks, your district librarian, for all of her coordination efforts and all of your wonderful librarians back at your campuses. Their success of the 2017 Scholastic Book Fair's Reading Summer Challenge was extremely successful. The summer reading program is a web-based program that encourages students to read all summer long by entering their minutes as they read, feeling a sense of accomplishment and a sense of competition. This is the second year that Socorro schools have participated, and because of your success, Isleta participated last year with EPISD following suit this year. At Scholastic, we know that summer is the perfect time to encourage kids to read and grow their independent reading skills and take that leap into summer instead of taking a summer slide. Our goal at Scholastic is to turn that summer slide around and make reading exciting. Last year, last summer, we had 890,000 children participate, reading over 139 million minutes. 14 countries participated and all 50 states. Knowing those stats, I want to share with you Socorro's contribution to those stats. Socorro School District children participated or read 5.9 million minutes, and number nine and number 10 in the world were here in Socorro. The first was H.D. Hilli with 1.6 million minutes read, Horizon Heights with 1.5 million minutes read, and then the, I have to just mention the other three schools that were in the top five, Herschel Antoine with 800,000, Mission Ridge with over 400,000, and Waco with 300,000 minutes. So, super success and congratulations to all the librarians and all their efforts and all your students in summer reading. Thank you.
Good evening, President Guerra, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. Wow, I want to say diddle to the kids, for the kids, because I can't say it half as well as they did. You all do such an amazing job and you deserve this recognition. So we are celebrating School Board Recognition Month. On behalf of all the members of the Socorro Education Association, we thank you for your selfless service which takes time away from your family. And not only the time you devote for the benefit of our students and employees, but also for your wisdom in managing our outstanding district. As Ian Parr states in The Dream of Sipio, "Virtue comes through contemplation of the divine and the exercise of philosophy, but it also comes through public service. The one is incomplete without the other. Power without wisdom is tyranny. Wisdom without power is pointless." We are blessed with your direction for our district and how you set the tone. We are also proud that others have recognized our school board's accomplishments as they were listed by the students. You make us very proud. Because of your leadership, it allows Dr. Espinoza to lead the district in an exceptional manner, which in turn gives all employees the opportunity to excel, which in turn allows our students to succeed. I will give you two examples out of many that we can recount, and this is on the part of the employees. We express deep appreciation to Mario Carmona from Human Resources for his assistance with a situation for a widow who is an SISD aide of one of our teachers. She was married to one of our teachers and he passed away. This employee was dealing with a very difficult situation and felt powerless to find a solution. Mr. Carmona came to the rescue. We also wish to express our appreciation to Mr. Iington, Mr. Carrasco, and their department for attending to the pummeling in the Transportation Department in a very swift manner. The employees could not believe that Mr. Iington's department would solve the situation so quickly. As Mahatma Gandhi said, "The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members." SISD employees are valued by this district and treated with respect and consideration. Thank you, Team SISD.
Thank you all. Next item will be public hearing. Annual Performance Report, TAPR 2016-17, and public hearing. Ms. Farmer.
Yes, good evening, President Guerra, members of the board, and Dr. Espinoza. My name is Alisa Sabat the Farmer, and I'm the Chief Academic Officer for Socorro ISD. Before I begin, again, I would just want to thank you for everything that you all do for our district. We couldn't do half of what we do without your leadership, so thank you all. The purpose of the presentation tonight is to share our 2016-2017 Annual Performance Report in the form of a public hearing as required by Texas Education Code Chapter 39 and for public accessibility. Our annual performance report is made up of the Texas Academic Performance Report, RPIM's Financial Standards Report, Campus Performance Objectives, Report of Student Enrollment in Post-Secondary Institutions, Report on Violent or Criminal Incidents, and Information Regarding School Violence Prevention and Intervention. Our TAPER, or Texas Academic Our TAPER, or Texas Academic Performance Report, is composed of our STAR results, our attendance rates, dropout rates, graduation rates, college-ready graduates, and student and staff profile. So before we begin, in 2017, TEA provided new performance labels and we wanted to share this with you all. In the years past, Level 2 Satisfactory is now noted as Approaches Grade Level. Level 2 Final Recommended is now noted as Meets Grade Level and Level 3 Advanced is now noted as Masters Grade Level. And these are shown on student reports when they receive their STAR reports. So for Socorro ISD, overall, the percent of students at Approaches Grade Level, as you can see, Socorro is above both state and region in all areas, reading, math, writing, science and social studies. And this is not only 3 through 8, but also our EOC scores. Our next area is Meets Grade Level. And this is the percent of students for Socorro ISD along with state and region percentages. And again, as you see, Socorro again is above our, both our state and our region. And then the top level, our Masters Grade Level. Here, Socorro is above the region in all areas. And as you can see, in reading and writing, we are working to make sure that we perform above the state. We are at even in math. However, in social studies, oh, and in science as well, we need to work. But in social studies, we are ahead of both state and region. So one of the areas of our Annual Performance Report includes our bilingual and ESL data. And these are the percent of students that meet Approaches Grade Level in reading, math, writing and science for 2017 versus 2016. And as you can see, we had 51% in reading, 75% in math, 55% Approaches Grade Level in writing, 63% in science and 58% in social studies. So while in math and science, we were ahead of last year, social studies, we were the same. Reading and writing is an area that we are concentrating our efforts on across our district this year. Our ELL exits from the bilingual ESL program are at 1,106, which is approximately 11% of our students. So those 11% this year, as they go into classes, are known as monitored students. They are exited from the bilingual and we're monitoring them. Our English Language Proficiency Data and Professional Development. So in front of you, what you have are how our students performed on Tellpass as the composite rating. And so you have your beginning at 9%, your intermediate at 23%, advanced at 30%, 37% and advanced high at 31%. Off to the side are the professional development that we, that we provide for those teachers. So the ultimate goal is for our students to reach advanced high so that we can exit them from the program. And there are four different areas of the Tellpass, but this is the composite score for it. Now, this next data is 2015-2016 attendance and graduation rates because it's always a year behind. As you can see, Socorro ISD is still above both state and region. We had 96.3% attendance rate last year. And our four-year graduation rate, we did hit 90.6%, which is phenomenal. We still have work to do, we're still working, but we are above the state and above the region in our graduation rate. Our 2015-2016 dropout rate is also a year behind, lagging. But as you can see, we're in the right direction. For grades 7 and 8, we're at 0%. And for grades 9 through 12, we are well below the state and the region at 1.3%. So our efforts are showing through our Walk for Success and our other efforts that we have at our campuses. Now, this next slide shows our student information, what we reported last year to PIMs. We had at that time 45,804 students. This year, as Dr. Espinoza said, we are 700 students more in, in our population. It shows that we have, out of that, 92.6% of our students are Hispanic, which is 42,392 students. And then our economically disadvantaged are 71.2% along with our at-risk, which is 45.7% of our total population. So this is what we, we work with every day and we're working to give them a good academic foundation. Our teacher profile. Now, in our, in our district, we have 0.5% of our teachers which have their doctorate, 30% their masters, of course, 67.3% have their bachelor's, and then we have 2.1% with no degree, which are our CTE teachers, maybe our culinary arts teachers, some of those teachers. And by program, if you'll notice, 10.9% are bilingual ESL teachers. And then you have the others, 6.7% are career in technology and so forth. Our teacher turnover rate is only at 9.2%. So it's very, it's low compared to what the state would be. This report is our operating expenditures. And from 2015-2016, what this shows is what our expenditures are in Socorro as compared to the state. So as you go down, you will see that for our programs, per student, we spend $6,198 as compared to the state, which spends $6,964. And we've been highlighted for spending less and doing more, which is, is great work on our part. The next area is our Campus Performance Objectives. And these will be found in your books. But each individual campus has goals that are aligned with the SISD Goal 2 of the District Improvement Plan. And this states, "SISD students will receive a quality education with rigorous instructional standards that adequately prepares them for the college and career of their choice." Our next section is our report from the Texas Education Coordinating, Texas Coordinating Board of Higher Education. That is kind of hard to say. However, what it does show for each of our six high schools and Mission Early College shows how our students fare or how they perform their first year out of high school as they enter into college that first semester. So these are our graduates from fiscal year 2015 and how they did the first semester in 2016. And so as you can see, we have Americas High School, Eastlake High School and Eldorado High School. For example, Americas, if you notice, all the way over to your right-hand side, out of the four-year public university, there were 31 students that actually had 3.5% grade point average or higher. And then, of course, it goes down. It also shows our two-year public colleges and then the independent colleges and universities, those students that were not trackable and then those that were not found. Now, some of the students also attend colleges out of state. That is not reported because these are just reports from our Texas universities and colleges. So we have our three high schools here, Americas, Eastlake and Eldorado. Then our next slide shows Mission Early, Montwood High School and Socorro High School. And again, this was for fiscal year 2015. Now, on this slide, this is a report on violent or criminal incidents. And this slide covers those disciplinary action codes which TEA requires us to report. And they are deemed as violent or criminal incidents and can ultimately lead a school to being identified as persistently, a persistently dangerous school. And so each of these codes here are, has a description. And as you can see, we have very few incidents in our schools. And they were found at these seven schools that are presented in front of you. We next have our Safe and Drug-Free Schools Prevention and Intervention Programs, which are throughout our schools. This is what we used in 2016-17. Just some of them are, for example, our 40 developmental assets, our gang awareness, our habits of mind, safety awareness, violence prevention programs and some others that are listed there that our counselors, our police officers, administrators and volunteers present and work with our students on. And then this is a hearing for public discussion of the annual report. And at this time, we'd like to solicit public input.
Mr. Guerra, I have a question.
Mr. Ayton?
Ms. Farmer?
Yes?
In reference to the report on high school graduates enrollment academic performance?
Yes.
You just went through that. It's my page 29, I don't know what slide that is.
Okay.
There, that one is actually the one I was after.
Okay.
Is it part of the rules that we don't track on our early college high school, the two-year? Because obviously so many of those students graduate with an associate's degree. We were tracking that on all the other high schools, but is something in the rules of the law that says we don't track those numbers here?
Well, we do, but this is from, if you'll notice, from 2015-2016. Now, for Mission Early, it shows, in fact, it shows, that would be a good question for us to find out. It shows that 100% of, 106 of our students went to the four-year public schools, I mean, public university. So, in fact, out of the 127 of those graduates, 106 attended the four-year. There were only four that went to the two-year public colleges to finish up their degree, so...
Well, my point would be is 127 of them attended a two-year college. Are those numbers not included there because this is after they graduate from high school? Is there something in the rule that prohibits that? Or why isn't there those GPAs denoted there? Because obviously they're due credit, they get the GPA.
And it's because it is the first, it's just that first semester out of high school. So we do not track that. It's for the Higher Educating Board only provides us that first semester out of high school. So the 20, the fall of 2016. So if they, for example, if they ended their two-year associate before they graduated, that would not pick up from Texas Education, Higher Education Coordinating Board.
So will that happen with all of our early college high schools?
More than likely, we would have to track. We would be tracking that. We actually have a...
But it wouldn't appear on the TAPR report?
It would not appear on that report. No, sir.
And the other question I have, could you please define teacher turnover?
Yes.
What does that mean?
So that could be teachers that leave the profession, just...
Does it include retirees?
It could include retirees, it could include they move out of state, they move to, you know, move from the district, they leave the district. It's just teacher turnover rate.
I understand, thank you.
Yes.
So at this moment, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come and speak, please do so now. Thank you, Ms. Farmer.
President Guerra, if I may, I do want to thank Ms. Sabatto-Farmer for the reporting on this TEA TAPER report. And as many of you all may know, or may not know, that this is a TAPER report that many school districts, school officials across the state of Texas look forward to seeing because it tells you how our schools are performing, it tells you how the school district is performing. And I'm proud to say that here in Region 19 in El Paso, Socorro ISD again is the number one student performance overall when you compare us to the other neighboring school districts. We're also, I just want to make that clear, that this is why we are a destination school district, why we continue to grow. Families want to bring their children to Socorro ISD because of our awesome teachers, administrators, our awesome students. We can, awesome board members, it is School Board Appreciation Month. It's absolutely no, no accident. So, great job, Ms. Sabatto-Farmer on this TAPER report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, district reports. Mr. Tom Ayton?
Good evening, President Garrett, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Thank you again for your service. And if I hadn't mentioned to you, Happy New Year, if I hadn't seen you. Today, we'll go over our facility report. It basically has the elementary school number 29, which is being constructed in the Pebble Hills area. And I believe it begins on page 35 of your report. We are into construction on this and the construction is, is moving. We'll show you some slides here in a minute. The concrete slab on grade has been poured up to 85%. We've been lifting the concrete panels in the classroom areas. You can actually physically see it from Pebble Hills High School. You can see the, the building coming up. So the project is moving. This is the project that is a, from the bond same as of the 2011. This is not our, any part of the new, new construction or new bond. As you can see, we're tilting or putting up walls. The, the walls in the foreground or in, in front that are laying down, those are our casting bed. They will come in there and cast the, the panels on those slabs and then basically lift them up as you can see the, the crane doing so. And you can see that the, the building is coming along. We're focusing on the classroom area, the two-story area, which is predominantly the classroom. And then this is a overhead shot showing the, the classroom area and the additional areas. And that concludes my report, if there's any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to number 10, consent agenda. Are there any items any board members would like to have pulled, please?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Have a motion by Ms. Nagara, second by Mr. Gandrea. Any for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to move on to new business. Item 11. Consider approval of 2018-2019, 2019-2020 Socorro ISD student calendar. Ms. Borego?
President Guerra, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Good evening and I diddle what every, everybody has said tonight and all of the kids. And they, you know, they say that out of the mouth of babes. So thank you for everything that you do for this community and for your integrity and honesty and, and hard work. So much appreciated, thank you very much. I have the honor to present the 2018-19, 2019-2020 calendars that are going to be adopted, that, we're going to ask for your approval to be adopted tonight for the next two years. Two years ago, we started the practice of adopting two years of calendars to help our families, especially our military families, so that they would be able to plan leave, et cetera, movement, deployment. So we are presenting the next two years. I am happy to say that with a lot of input, let me emphasize a lot of input. We went to EPAC, we went to the principals, we went to several committees. Got a lot of input from several teachers and the teachers' associations in this calendar. I'm, I'm happy to present the calendar. I think it was, you have it in front of you, if I'm not mistaken. It mirrors very much so this present year's calendar, but without the Saturday in March. It is, we are attending school 178 days the next two years, which is the same as this school year. There will be nine teacher in-service workdays because by law, teachers must work 187-day contract. I am very happy to announce that after the March break, following kind of a trend, after the January break,
the January break, we are giving our teachers a planning day before the kiddos come back, and that allowed us to bring it into the week and give those teachers an entire day. It's a staff development day, but it'll be a planning staff development day. So, we're very excited about that, and so are the teachers. And I'm very happy to announce that this year, everybody was very excited to come back January 2nd this year, but I have to break the news that next year, we'll be coming back on January 7th, and the following year on January the 6th. So, I know you'll be, yay. So, with that, I'd like to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Borrego?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Nahara, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Borrego.
I do want to thank, if I may, Ms. Borrego and the entire team. Like I said, lots of input. Thank you, Ms. Borrego.
Next item, 11B, Consider Approval of Charter and Application for the Bond Accountability Committee. Mr. Escobar.
Good evening again, President Garrett, members of board, Dr. Espinoza. In your packet on page 80, you have a copy of the draft charter, as well as the application for our Bond Accountability Committee. The charter follows the modern from our successful 2011 Bond Accountability Committee, in which we will publicize an open application process for our community. Trustees will appoint two representatives each to serve on the committee, and Mr. Iantin's team and our communications team will facilitate those meetings and presentations to them. The application is also there after the third page of the charter. And again, all of the materials follow the process from this last successful Bond Accountability Committee. So, with that, administration recommends consideration approval of the items as presented.
Second?
Have a motion by Mr. Gondra, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any for discussion?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Is this, it doesn't look like the last one. You said it follows the same one?
Yes, sir.
It looks a little bit different. Where were the changes?
We really updated the years. The members are the same. The fact that the board president will name the chair, vice chair. I'm not sure if there's any other major changes that you noticed.
It just looked a little bit different, because I thought we had some statements on dealing with governance as far as, you know, how long they would serve, how they were appointed. I know you have it here, but I thought it was worded differently before. But if you say we copied the other one, then...
Yeah, we carried it over. Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Any for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 11C, Consider Approval of 2018-19 Budget Priorities and Calendar. Mr. Tony Ressa.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to also extend my gratitude and thanks for all the things that you've done as a board. Appreciate that. So, President Garrett, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board, tonight, the administration is requesting consideration approval for the 2018-19 budget priorities, as well as the calendar. These priorities have been submitted for review and input through the various board committees, and want to thank you for your thoughtful questions and comments in these meetings. Before you is a list of priorities that we have, and we're asking for your approval. First of all, we're asking to put on the budget to provide a commensurate general pay increase for all Socorro ISD employees, those that are qualified for a raise. Second, to budget additional positions for growth, what we're talking about is 25 full-time instructional positions. Now, at the committees, there was a, there was a question about how many were hired last year. I believe that amount was 23 instructional positions were hired last year. And number three, budget for additional personnel needed to fully staff the new elementary school. So, we're talking about counselors, the librarian, the nurse, the custodial staff, as well as other instructional positions like sky coaches and so forth. Now, while this is a relatively short list, please keep in mind that additional district initiatives will most likely still be added. These priorities are a starting point, and we'll add additional items, and we'll inform the board of those items through the budget process. So, with that in mind, we'll just talk about the budget calendar for adoption by the budget, and then I'll ask if there's any questions about these priorities at the end. So, what you have there is the calendar, the first part of the calendar. It goes through from today through the end of March. It's very similar to last year's adopted calendar. A couple of things that are different. First of all, that the additional department request for staff, it will take place in February, and also that the first budget workshop will be held on March the 29th, which is a Thursday, and that's because our regularly scheduled board meeting in March will be on that Tuesday. So, and again, that's because we're having intercession those two weeks in March. And then you have the remaining part of the calendar that goes from April through the end of August, when we adopt the tax rate. So, again, this is very similar. However, if there's conflicts, we can always amend it. Historically, we've always changed one or two dates that are listed here, but this is really pretty much just the calendar we followed for the last several years. So, are there any questions with respect to the priorities and the calendars? And I mentioned before, with respect to the priorities, this is a starting point. As there's other initiatives that come up, we'll discuss that at that time, and we'll inform the board as we're going through the budget workshops.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Youbs, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any for discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ressa.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, 11D, Consider Approval of Proposed Socorro ISD Boundary Adjustments for 2018-2019 School Year. Ms. Macias.
Thank you, President Garrett, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Thank you for everything that you consistently do. Greatly appreciate you all. I'm here to present today's proposed boundaries for Elementary 29 in Lujan Chavez Elementary. We start off with our amazing prototype of our new Elementary 29, state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art 21st century learning. Mr. Sepulveda and I, we went on a road trip, and we went to six community meetings to gather input. What was truly amazing is that during his presentation, he shared that groundbreaking was in November, and he had just a little pile of dirt that, and a little shovel. But now, this was taken last week, and this is our Elementary 29 under construction. So, it's truly, truly amazing to know that it'll be ready to go for our students July of 2018. These are the community meetings that we attended. We started with Lujan Chavez on January 3rd, and we, and we ended with Lujan Chavez January 11th. And what we did is we invited all of the students that are currently possibly going to be transitioned. What we shared with all of the families is we wanted their input. What are the things that you want to see in this new school? And these are the proposed boundaries. Tell us how you feel, and truly, they were excited with the idea of opening it up a new school. However, it's a new school, so they're going, "Ooh, I love the school that I'm at." So, with that, we got all of their input. The one thing that was consistent is that SISD is the district of choice. One thing that I could share with you is that they were truly excited of our WIN Academy. That was a question that came up. How is the WIN? What are we going to do? So, giving them those opportunities and that flexibility, that's something that they truly appreciated, that the board was going to look at. What can we do to open up the new elementary, but consistently stay with the great things that we're doing at our current elementaries? So, with that, what we did is we sent them an invite personally. They got it in the mail in December, and they got two messages via phone and a text message, and of course, every single campus invited those individual students and parents to come and get their feedback. With that, this is the proposition and the information that we shared with them. This entire boundary is currently the Lujan Chavez Elementary boundary. If you look at the numbers and you add them up, it adds up to 1,873 students, pre-K through 5th grade, that should be going to Lujan Chavez Elementary. More than 700 students are overflowed from Lujan Chavez Elementary, because we don't have space in their neighborhood school. With Elementary 29, we would then be able to provide that elementary, community, school experience to all of these students, and that was the reason that they were truly excited. With that, the new Lujan Chavez Elementary and going clockwise would be, the westernmost point would be Saragossa, Pebble Hills at the north, Chester Foster, Tim Foster, Windermere, Shira, and, or Shira, and Motwood. So, with that, we would house 1,192 students at Lujan Chavez Elementary, and they would have their ability, many of these students are overflowed. They would have the ability to come back home to Lujan Chavez Elementary, if these boundaries are approved. For Elementary 29, the proposed boundaries, again, starting clockwise from Rich Beam, would be Rich Beam, Pebble Hills, Tim Floyd, Windermere-Beramont, and Tim Foster, Charles Foster. With that, we are proposing the recommendation to enroll 671 pre-K through 5th grade students at Elementary 29. The reason that we're leaving additional room for growth is we currently have 1,954 single-family lots under review in the area, which is that little area in the red. And with that, whenever we do, and Mr. Oneheim is here, you know that he's my right hand with this, in doing our calculations, after five years, we're projecting about 334 students coming to that school. With the proposed boundaries that I'll bring to you, next year for Elementary 30, it all works out. We're proposing Elementary 30 being the pre-K hub for the Pebble Hills feeder pattern, so therefore, leaving available space and time for this elementary to house all the students. With that, transparency is very important. So, on our website, we have a link where they could get all this updated information. When I went to the boundary meetings, what I shared with them is this was under proposal, and all the feedback that I would receive that I would share with you all. Again, their number-one feedback, believe it or not, number-one, safety, transportation. Okay, tell us about transportation, because as I showed you the picture, it's a, it's beautiful school coming up, but there's nothing around it. So, they said, "Okay, tell me about how we're going to work with transportation." So, here, we wanted to share with you that for transportation, it's truly a community school. Only the little corner on the southernmost tip, right by, in that little green area, is that new soccer park. That little corner area is the only area that is outside the two-mile zone, and the little area on top, which is right near, let me look at my notes really quick, right near Rich Beam and Pebble Hills, that little corner area, that's also an area that would qualify for transportation moving forward. However, the fact that we currently have that vacant area, there's construction going through, and we're still looking at the pathways, what I'll do is, once the boundaries are approved, next month, we'll go back to the community, and we will do some research, transportation will, for hazardous areas, and we've done this in the past, and then February and March, I'll bring it back to the board for possible approval for the hazardous zones. So, with that, what we did is, all of the area in yellow would then, and again, we are looking at still finalizing, would possibly qualify for transportation. So, for the first possible year, we would be looking at transporting all of those students that needed to, to that elementary until construction slowed down in the area and pathways were in place. And the last item, I'm here to ask for your approval of the boundaries as presented, and I will be also going over FC Local moving forward.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Gondra, second by Mr. Gonzalez. Any for discussion?
Discussion. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a slide, what the impact will be on the campuses that we're going to remove students from? What's going to be your count? Because I saw minus 63 at one plane and so forth. What's going to be the total count at those campuses then?
Yes, sir.
Right there. Like Eduardo, Paso del Norte, Chester, what are those numbers going to go to?
Yes. All of these students are the ones transitioning into the new elementary, so therefore, you're exactly right. So, for example, in Roberto Eduardo, it would be 61 students transitioning to the new elementary, which is great, meaning that we wouldn't have students in portables anymore. The other thing is that Butler Elementary, until Elementary number 30 is built, Butler Elementary is still overflowing students, more than 400 per year. So, therefore, we're still looking at that available space. Moving down Paso del Norte at 33, so those campuses would still continue to help us with that overflow. And I know that in February, Human Resources, they facilitated, facilitate our staffing, and those, all of those numbers are actually addressed during the staffing. So, through attrition, that's how we're able to, to house and be ready for next year.
So, this school will not address the overflow problem at Lujan Chavez? It'll take 244, but it's not going to, it's not going to make it a net zero type of situation?
It is, because, for example, those 61 students at Eduardo, many of them are overflowed from Lujan Chavez to Eduardo, so therefore, that, they come all right back. So, it does become a balance.
And on your numbers, we currently have an elementary school with 1,100 students?
Correct.
Thank you.
And that is Lujan Chavez, sir.
Thank you.
Any for discussion?
What was Butler's enrollment right now?
Butler enrollment is 900 and, help me out, 943?
And they have about 400 students that are overflowed, so...
Yes.
Elementary 30, that's the one will help out Butler.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I heard somebody. Am I good with the number? Okay.
All those in favor?
I'll go check.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Macias. Next item, Consider Approval of Local Policy. Ms. Macias.
Yes. Administration would recommend the approval of FC Local as presented.
Motion to approve?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Sorry.
Ms. Nahara?
Discussion.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Macias? I don't think, I don't understand the second statement in the policy. A student who changes residence during the second semester may complete the school year at the school she or he has been attending contingent on transfer criteria. What exactly does that mean? I mean, it's, to me, an ambiguous statement. Simply stated, if I move right now in January, do my kids get to go to the same school they've been going since the beginning of August? Yes or no?
Correct. They, they're able to finish off the school year due to the transfer criteria. Then the next year, they actually apply again, and at that point, if they meet the transfer criteria, then a new approval is made.
See, but it says contingent on transfer criteria. It doesn't say in accordance with. In other words, it doesn't say that because I meet the trans, it, it, it says, "If I meet the transfer criteria," which, according to the transfer criteria that I've read, me moving doesn't allow me to stay at the school. So, if that says contingent, you know, I mean, if that's what you're telling me, we're trying to say, because then I'm okay with it. I think we do it one way or the other, you know, because when I bought a house, I tried to register my child in the school that they were going to go to whenever I could actually move into the house, and I couldn't do that. So, they had to go to the school to where I actually resided. And so, what I'm saying is, we can't do it both ways. Either we let them go to the school they're going to go to, or we allow them to stay at the school that they started to begin with, but we can't force them to move halfway through. And to me, what that word contingent means is that if I meet the criteria, that's the contingency, if I meet the transfer criteria, then I'll be allowed to stay at my school. If that's not your intent, then, okay, I'll take your word for it. That's the way that we're going to adopt or practice the policy, and that's, you know what, I'll explain if, if, if I'm asked questions about it, but yeah, to me, it just, it just, so is that what we're intending?
Yes, that is our intent, and that is our practice. And the reason that we put on there, or, you know, upon the transfer criteria is just to ensure that occurs. Oftentimes, students are at a campus, and they don't have that transfer criteria, and they never did. And that, that way, it does allow us to do, the other side is to get the student, and we always do what's best for students, ensure that the student is going to finish off the year, because we want a good transfer record, and this gives us the opportunity to do that. The other side, again, we could share with them, you never met the transfer criteria, so you're not going to be eligible to, to apply. And then, we always let them end the year and then transition. But if we don't put it that way, they, they assume that since they were allowed to, they're going to continue. So, that's the reasoning for that wording, is so that they understand that if they don't have that transfer criteria, they cannot move forward and apply for, you know, a different outcome moving forward. I hope that helps.
Okay, and then in the second edit, there, the sentence ends in, "shall attend the homeschool." What is the homeschool? Is the homeschool the school that I'm going to, or is the homeschool?
By attendance, by boundaries. That is their homeschool. And for example, if I live in the Americas feeder pattern, but child go, or they go to Socorro, that's transfer criteria. Or if it's a magnet program, it's transfer criteria. Those are all the in-district transfer criterias that we have.
So, what I'm understanding is that, for example, if somebody right now is in 3rd grade at Lujan Chavez, and we open number 29, they're going to be, they, they're not going to stay at Lujan Chavez. They're going to move to 4th. Okay?
Correct.
What if I have a brother and a sister in 1st grade and in 5th grade at Lujan Chavez?
They will all move to the new school, because it's a pre-K through 5. Now, there is, let me say that if one of the students was in a unit, serving them for special needs, that would be a unique situation, and we would do an... special needs, that would be a unique situation, and we would do an in-district transfer, DSC approval, because that meets qualifying criteria or sibling clause, and we have that under the in-district transfers.
Right.
And the reason that we do that is, again, elementary schools are amazing, but they're new, and it's something different, it's changed. So, for example, Purple Heart, if we would have not had this in policy, we would have opened up with like eight students. And now, you know, and...
But we didn't have it in policy, because the policy is sitting right in front of me, so...
But practice, but in practice, and that's why I said, we wanna make sure that we have it down, because that's what we've always done. Whenever we open up new campuses, the students transfer over. And like I said, going back to Purple Heart, now they go, oh, we love it, but initially, it's something new, so, and they love the school that they're at. So we just tell them, give us an opportunity, and like I said, Mr. Sepulveda, I think, did a great job in presenting to, to the members that went to our committee meetings.
Okay. Funny, when we're kids, we don't want new things, but when we're adults, we want new cars, new boats.
I know, I tell them to trust us.
Right. Okay. Good.
Any for discussion?
Mr. Garrett.
Yes, Mr. Yu.
I'm on the same boat, I think, a little bit as Mr. Nahara. I'm not really sure why that third statement's even needed. Don't students attend the school that's in their boundaries unless they're overflowed, unless there's no room? Why, why do we need a statement that says students that reside, who reside in a school attendance boundary, which has been modified, you know, due to opening of a new campus? We may modify boundaries for a variety of reasons. Why do we have to specify that it's because of a new campus? I mean, and at the end of the day, shall attend their homeschool, all of our students attend their homeschool unless they're overflowed or there's reason to move them, I'm not even sure that we need this statement, other than we wanna get a big stick to try to move students from one place to the other, which has not been necessary in the ten years I've been here. Why do we need this statement?
It's for clarification. Last year, when I proposed the boundaries, what we did is, we did the transition. Whenever students moved from one campus to the other, which is from fifth to sixth, pre-K to kinder, or eighth to ninth grade, that's when the transition occurred, so they were actually grandfathered in. And that was done in the past, so whenever there's boundaries that we grandfather in, that's different criteria than when we open up a new campus. And that's why we wanted to make the, the difference between the two.
Well, then, this statement should say, whenever our boundary is modified, students will attend the school, their homeschool. That way, whether we modify it because of attendance, because somebody put a new freeway, for a variety of reasons, but we wanna be specific on this statement, for whatever reason, new school. And, and I'm not really sure why we wanna be that specific, when, when we haven't needed it all these years.
It's just procedure, or what, we're just trying to be transparent with our procedure. And as I mentioned with our other boundaries, their, students are grandfathered in. For example, if a student was in first grade at Lujan Chavez, and the new boundary had them at Helen Ball, they wouldn't transition unless they were going from fifth grade to sixth grade, so therefore, they transition at fifth grade going to Slider instead of Helen Ball. If not, we would've had that natural transition of quite a few students last year. So what we did is, we grandfathered, grandfathered them in to finish off their educational set, they did have a choice, but finish off their educational setting at the campus that they're at until there's the natural transition. And majority of the parents decided to, to do the grandfathering for the boundaries that you all approved last year.
And this will eliminate that.
Correct. And this year, it's pretty much following what we did with Purple Heart, with Mission Ridge, those are the things that we have done in the past. When we open up new schools, students naturally transition a hundred percent, unless there's a qualifying reason for an in-district transfer. We just wanted to make sure that it was, again, clear and in policy, versus the procedure that we followed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Macias, so then, why not add this clarity to whatever existing boundary policy
we have, instead of adding it here? I mean, 'cause ultimately, if we have a boundary policy, and we have to say in other policies that, oh, we're not kidding, then why have the other policy?
No, this is, this is our, this is our one, this is our main one.
Okay, so this is the main one?
Mm-hmm. The others are pretty much procedural, and this is the main one. And that's why, again, for transparency, we wanted to make sure that it was in policy and not in, and not in a regulation, and the regulation was just for clarity, but it was in policy.
Is this a recommendation made by Tasby?
No, sir.
So we're not following Tasby?
No, sir.
I'm making a point.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
It's an inside joke from policy committee.
Any for, any other discussion? The motion was made by Ms. Nahara, second by Mr. Gander. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Macias. Next item, eleven F, consider approval of professional services for Socorro High School reconstruction, new middle school for East Lake area, and the new SAC. Mr. Ayington.
We are gonna make some recommendations on our two thousand and seventeen bond program tonight. We are looking at three projects that will require some professional services, that's the architects and engineering, and then two of those projects will require a construction manager at risk. We will take the architectural recommendations first, and then we'll look at the CM at risk. Back on November the fifteenth, we presented to the board, or asked for y'all, for us to go down, out for solicitation. Those solicitations were sent out, and on December the fifteenth, prior to our break, purchasing received an RFQ for the professional services. Seventeen firms applied, are submitted to that RFQ, and they are listed in your board package, I won't read each one of them. Of the seventeen firms, fourteen of them submitted on Socorro High School, sixteen submitted on the new middle school, and then thirteen submitted on the new SAC. The administrative review committee, which is made up of five individuals, myself, Mr. Ressa, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Carrasco, and Mr. Crespo, are the administrative review committee met all day on January the eleventh to review not only the professional services, but also to review the CM at risk for the two projects. You should have received a board communicate this weekend that basically listed the firms in alphabetical order that we came up with, and tonight, I will make the recommendations of the committee in order of preference for your consideration and approval. We will take the three professional services, or the three projects that have to do with architects first, individually. We will begin with Socorro High School. Socorro High School, we are recommending VLK Architects, Mahasmor Architect, M&amp;K Architects slash DLR Group, Carl Daniels Architects, and PSRBB Architects slash LP Inc. That's the order of our preference on Socorro High School. Administration recommends approval.
Question.
Question. Ms. Nahara?
Ms. Ayington, so, let's see, remind me again, with professional services, architects, we go to the first one, we try and negotiate an agreement, if we come to an agreement, great, it stops there, we move forward with the agreement. If we don't, then we say, thank you very much, and proceed to the next one, correct?
That is correct. We will continue to follow those procedures, we will come back to the board for y'all's approvals on the, on that, once we start the negotiation, but that is correct.
And then if we go through, you gave three different names? Five? Okay. I should've said five. I was thinking five, but then I thought, no, that was too many. So, okay, so, five. If we go through all five, and then we don't reach an agreement with any of them, then we start over again, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Mr. Garrett.
Mr. Yu.
Of the three projects, so the intent here would be that we're probably gonna select, at the end of the day, three different architectural firms to work on these projects?
Yes, sir.
Of concern to me is our biggest project, Socorro High School, you and I spoke about this the other day, it, it's our first opportunity to rebuild a campus where there's an existing early college high school in place, but more important, it's our first opportunity to rebuild a campus where we have an academy on there, that, that, that's longstanding, the Health Professions Academy. In health professions, where I work at the community college, we're investing a lot of money in simulation labs for health professions and so forth. So simulation is big in the health firm, in the, in the, in the health industry. I know architects have done simulation in, in CAD and many other areas, but simulation's big in health professions, and it's our opportunity to build a, a unique Health Professions Academy at Socorro High School, as well as a unique campus. As you're looking at these five firms, are these five firms capable of doing that? Because some of this is some specialty work, simulations and, and things for the early college high school, and how we put their campus together and build it on an existing campus. Were you satisfied with that?
Yes, sir. We, we, we looked at that very closely, because we were very concerned that it is an existing campus, it's not a new facility, and like you had mentioned, that there are gonna, this is gonna give us the opportunity to do some things at a new, a high school that has academies built in it, not only that particular academy, but it's also has a early college high school. And then, you know, and, and, and what we have been doing in the past, at our existing school, we've been kinda, you know, just kinda forced it into a place, and now we'll be able to look at not only that academy, but the early college high school. We took a lot of that in consideration. All these firms are, have worked on STEM programs and, and other type of labs and things like that. We looked at all of that. Yes, sir.
And I know, Tom, but we can look at the detail here, but I spoke to Dr. Espinoza, there's the Bakey Institute in the Houston area. I think either San Antonio, or actually Houston ISD, also has a Health Professions Academy, that it would be a great opportunity at this point, you know, if we're gonna put a wall here or a wall there, if we could put the wall in the right place and make a, a premier Health Professions Academy. My interest here is that healthcare has just overtaken other careers because of baby boomers, we, we know that. And the other thing is, we know healthcare is typically recession-proof. They're always gonna need healthcare professionals all the way across the board, and so, you know, we've been advertising that for a long time. So I, I think we really have a unique opportunity to do something great at Socorro High School, because this academy's there also, as well as the regular campus. I, I know it'll be a whole different world, and so I was hoping that, that, I think you've said yes, that these firms would be able to look at that and be able to put that together for us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Nahara?
On that same vein, it's interesting that you mentioned that, Mr. Yu, because I, as I was walking out the door, the reason I didn't leave as early as I wanted to was because there was a news story about Pima Medical Institute opening today, they had the grand opening or something like that, but what was interesting is all the facts that they were stating about the shortages, not just in the nation, but specifically here in El Paso, so I do think this presents a very unique opportunity, not just to prepare our students, but prepare them for a future and improvement here, 'cause, you know, if we train them here, and they advance here, then hopefully, they'll stay here as well and help eliminate, or address, you know, some of the shortages that we have for providers here in our area, so yeah, great opportunity.
Any other discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Yu, second by Mr. Nahara. Any for a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, item eleven G, consider approval of construction management at risk for Socorro High...
Mr. Garrett, we got two more projects.
So I'm sorry. I'm jumping the gun. Okay, Mr. Ayton?
Okay, on the new middle school, the same architectural firm, as I stated, fourteen of the seventeen proposed on the, excuse me, sixteen of the seventeen firms proposed on the new middle school. We are recommended in order of preference, the same goes with Socorro High School, we'll start with number one, if we don't reach an agreement, we cease and then move to number two, et cetera. For the new middle school, this is the new middle school that is gonna be built out in the East Lake area. We are recommending in our, for the board consideration, Mahas Morris as one, M&amp;K as two, PSRBB Architects slash LP as three, and then VLK as four. There just happened to be in that alphabetical order, that's our recommendation.
Mr. Garrett. Ms. Nahara?
Mr. Blanco, are we allowed to address the items individually, even though it's one? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Yu, second by Mr. Nahara. Any for a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And for the new SAC, the SAC number two, as we're calling it right now, there were thirteen of the seventeen firms submitted on that. We are recommending that number one choice would be HKS, number two would be PSRBB Architects slash LP, number three would be Mahas Morris, and number four is VLK. Administration recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion by Mr. Yu, second by Ms. Rodriguez.
That wasn't me, sir.
Correction.
I have a motion by Mr. Nahara, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any for a discussion?
Yes, question.
Mr. Yu.
This is, sorry, but this is also a unique project. Have any of these people built a stadium before?
Yes, HKS, this is one of the unique one that we actually opened it up a little bit. HKS has done a lot of high school work, they have done a lot of professional work. You'll be seeing their stadium in about three weeks in Minnesota. They've done AT&T, they've done Lucas Oil, and they did one more, I can't remember. But the big one that we looked at here was that they have done Legacy, which is in Katy, and it's actually similar to our project, because they built a new stadium next to an existing stadium.
And this isn't the one in Allen that's crumbling, right?
No, sir. No. It's in Houston, not Dallas.
Okay. I'm good, thank you.
And so they are gonna make a dome, right?
Well, he said AT&T, is what I'm expecting.
On budget and on time.
But we looked just at the high, we looked just at the high school work that they have done.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, eleven G, consider approval of construction management at risk for Socorro High School reconstruction, new middle school for East Lake, Ms. Ayington.
Yes, we have, on January the third, we received proposals from four construction manager at risk, requests for proposals for four firms, and those four firms are Baines General Contractor, Buford Thompson Company, Dan Techs Construction, and Jordan Foster. Of the four, three of them proposed on Socorro High School, and then, of course, all four of them proposed on the new middle school. Again, the administrative review committee met on January the eleventh.
Oh, Mr. Ayington, I'm sorry, Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Before he gives us maybe the listing here, only four? I mean, we get like, what, seventeen architects and, and, and four contractors? Could, maybe we address that?
Yeah, I was a little concerned, but that this shows you, there's a lot of work out there that we're competing with right now, so the, you know, so we, we only had four that applied.
So if we went back out, would we get more, and would the delay be a bad thing? A thirty-day delay?
I think the delay would be, would hinder it on Socorro High School, maybe not necessarily on the middle school, because we got a little bit of time there, but because we're still looking at land acquisition on the, the new middle school. Socorro High School, we're ready to go.
Ms. Ayington's not the principal at Enzer Middle School, you can tell.
You know, we've, we've had discussions before, I think, the, my philosophy has always been, we get out there in front of people, and, and we get, we, you know, we start moving. And again, these projects, at least Socorro High School, are very limited, because there are only three that proposed on it, because we're talking eighty, ninety million dollars, and there's only so many firms... And there's only so many firms, construction firms or CM firms that can bond that type of work. And then we look at that very closely when we do our evaluation to see how much they have in bonding capacity, how much is committed, and how much is unused. So, you know.
How long were the bids out? Did we give ample time for people to bid?
Yeah.
It would just be nice to have ten or fifteen of these people bidding, but. Yes, Mr. Garrett? They were out for at least that long?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Garrett? Ms. Nahara?
Mr. Ayington, so, I, I, I know you weren't done with your, with your speech there, but, or your presentation, but you had four firms you mentioned, right, that, that, that responded? Are you confident moving forward now because the four that you expected, who you're confident can deliver upon, you know, this particular line item, are, are the responses that you got? And, and I guess there's no other way to put it, but certainly not, you know, those firms who don't have any work and that's because they're not real good and nobody wants them anymore? So.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm confident with the, the four firms that applied. I mean, we've done work with all four of them. You know, I just, you know, my philosophy is get them on a contract and then we start working with them when we've got them on a contract. The next set of projects, we'll probably see more because they're gonna be the, you know, in the twenties and thirty millions and, you know, more, you know, smaller type. They're not small. Twenty million is twenty million, thirty million is thirty million. But it's gonna probably attract more contractors or CMs. However, we're gonna bid a lot of this, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do competitive seal proposals. So that's gonna open it up to a lot more people. But we, we, we still have to consider their bonding capacity and what they have used. I am very confident with any four of these, any one of these four.
Ms. Garrett? Ms. Gonzalez?
Being that there may be some sort of a shortages in material and manpower, do you foresee any problem to finish, finishing, you know, within the time allotted?
I'm confident that we get started early, we'll, we'll be able to finish. I mean, the, the more time we give them to build a building, you know, we, there has been some discussion that some of our timelines might be a little bit long. But, you know, it's, it's, you know, if, if, if we give them three years to build something or twenty-four months to build something, they do it in eighteen months. You know, that saves them money and saves us money and gets us into the facility quicker. So I can't forecast the future. I know that the prices of materials will, will, will continue to go up because of natural disasters and, and things like that that have occurred. But I, I, I do believe if we get started now on these projects, and we've always said during the bond process, we were gonna hit the road running and, and get the projects out, I think we'll be in better shape instead of waiting.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, I gotta give you the recommendation. Okay. That's what you're waiting for. For Socorro High School, we are recommending Buford Thompson, Baines General Contractor, and C F Jordan in that order. Administration recommends approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Gonzalez, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any for a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Motion, motion carries. Mr. Ayington, Eastlake Peter School.
Yes, the new middle school. We are recommending that Baines General Contractor be number one, Dan Tex number two, Buford Thompson three, and Jordan Foster four. Administration recommends approval in that order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Nahara, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any for a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Ayington. Now we're going to item eleven H. Consider approval of authorization to publish RFQ for, for professional services and RFQ for construction management at risk for phase two of the two thousand and seventeen bond program.
Yes, on page one ten, I think, of your book. This is the second phase of the two thousand and eighteen bond, two thousand and seventeen bond program. This is where we ask to go out for the solic- authorization to solicit for professional services and for construction manager at risk. Professional services, we are asking to start working with purchasing for the support services and technology addition, the high school improvements at Montwood Americas and Eldorado, the elementary multipurpose rooms, the athletic improvement, which is the lighting of the softball and baseball fields, the new elementary school number thirty-one in El, in Eastlake area, the maintenance and transportation, and for the construction manager at risk for the support services, the technology addition, and for the three high school additions, Montwood, at, at, Montwood Americas and Eldorado. We will follow the same procedures that we have. We will bring some of them to you, if we get the advertisements out, some of them to you in February, and then we'll bring the rest of them to you in March. We'll kinda split it up. I'll sit down with, and if you recall, back in November, we went over phase one and phase two, and it basically gave you a kind of a broke breakdown of, of those timelines and stuff. So administration recommends approval to solicit for phase two of the two thousand and seventeen-
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Ayu, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any for a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayington. Next item, eleven I, consider appointment, reappointment of individuals to the Pasco Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Would anybody like to nominate somebody?
Well, motion to reappoint Mr. Gary Gandara.
Two.
Well, but I don't know the other guy, so, please, somebody else. Who? You? Oh, Mr. Nahara, and Mr. Nahara, I'm sorry. Motion for Mr. Gandara and Mr. Nahara.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Ayu, second by Ms. Nahara. Any for a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Now, item number twelve, executive session. The meeting is to be closed for consultation of legal counsel regarding status and employment of G S Sela to include recommendation, a final action on suspension without pay, and termination of employment for good cause. To discuss personal and real estate matters, to consider administrative recommendations for principal position at Waco Elementary School, assistant principal positions at James P. Butler Elementary School, O'Shea Kelleher Elementary School, Rafael Hernando School, and Sunridge Middle School, special education and physical therapists, and to hear superintendent mid-cycle formal evaluation update under Texas government code sections five five one point zero seven one, five five one point zero seven two, and five five one point zero seven four. The time is eight four. Eight oh four. The board is back from executive session. The time is nine thirty. Move on to item thirteen, new business discussion and possible action regarding employment of G S Sela and recommendation administration to take final action on suspension without pay and termination of employment for good cause. Mr. Blanco?
Thank you, Board President Garrett, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. In the December meeting, we actually initiated the action regarding Mr. Soselo's employment. He was suspended immediately without pay and he was proposed for termination for good cause for the reasons that we briefed you on. Mr. Soselo was sent letters both regular and certified mail. No appeal has been filed. The time for him to file an appeal regarding the board's proposed action has passed. And we're recommending that you take final action and complete the termination of Mr. Soselo's employment contract for good cause for the reasons that we presented to you in closed session in the December meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion, motion made by Mr. Nahara, second by Ms. Nahara. Any for a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, thirteen B, consider approval administrative recommendations. First one we'll go with is Waco Elementary School. Dr. Espinoza?
President Garrett, members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Ms. Myrna Lopez to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as the new principal of Waco Elementary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nahara, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any for a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next position is Butler Elementary School.
President Garrett, members of the board, at this time, administration is pulling this item from the agenda.
Assistant principal for O'Shea Kelleher Elementary School.
Yes, President Garrett, members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Ms. Marta Santana to assume the roles and the responsibilities as assistant principal at O'Shea Elementary.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Nahara, second by Mr. Gandara. Any for a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next one is Rafael Hernando School.
Yes, President Garrett, members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Mr. Raoul Nava to assume the roles and the responsibilities as assistant principal at Hernando Middle School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nahara, second by Mr. Nahara. Any for a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next one is Sunridge Middle School.
Yes, President Garrett, members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Ms. Ashley Adcox to assume the role and the responsibilities as the new assistant principal of Sunridge Middle School.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nahara, second by Ms. Nahara. Any for a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next one is special education, physical therapist.
Yes, President Garrett, members of the board, at this time, administration recommends Ms. Nicole Alvillar to assume the roles and the responsibilities as the new special education physical therapist.
Motion to approve. Second.
It doesn't matter, whatever.
A motion by, a motion by Mr. Nahara, second by Ms. Rodriguez. Any for a discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There's no further business. This board remains adjourned at nine thirty-four.